Seven o'clock and in spite of the fact that Ducky here bees over. I'd like to call the May 28, 2019 meeting of the College Place City Council meeting to order. Ms. Selby, would you please lead our plaid delegations?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, one free republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could take a short minute to recognize the solemnity of the evening that we're in, the events and the planning we're going to be doing this evening. Appreciate that. Thank you all very much. It's now time for a public comment period. Anybody who wishes to address the College Place City Council on items not on the formal agenda, please step to the podium, state your name and address. Seeing no one, before it was a consent agenda, I would make one addition to the consent agenda that is proving the absence of Ms. Nyad, the list missing. The items on there approving the agenda for tonight, approving council minutes from May 14, 2019, and the absence of Ms. Nyad.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Sherman, seconded by Ms. Selby. All in favor, please signify with saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Push your passes unanimously. You know, one of the few things that I get to do that really is a pleasure is recognizing our long-term employees. And on May 24, 2019, John Booth worked for the city for 20 years. John, would you come up and get your certificate of appreciation and pen?
Thank you for the privilege of serving the citizens of College Place.
Well, that's quite all right. For those of you who may or may not have been, John is part of our fire prevention officer. He just does a fabulous job keeping our city safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
And now, for action items, Mr. Gordon, standard plan updates.
Thank you, Mayor. We brought these standard plan updates to you last meeting and went through them. So I don't think there's a whole lot new. I did add one change, not change, I should say a modified standard that came through right at the last minute. But again, it's just a luminaire standards, base and mounts and so forth. So just a brief summary here, we have, I'm not going to go through them all in detail, but we have standard plan 010. This is kind of our general comments that we use or requirements on any regular city project. And we are adding engineer certification for parking lots and American disabilities act compliance. That means that the parking lots on the design fit our standards, and they also meet the ADA compliance requirements for the federal regulations. Standard plan 110.72, if you recall, there was some question about the colors of some of our street signs. This standardizes that to all being the same MUTCD colors. Standard plan 110.73, just a change in luminaire model. 110.74, again, we added base and luminaire specifications for some of our more decorative luminaires. And then 310 was just some various edits to some of the standard language. Pretty mundane stuff. You've seen it before. So with that, if there are any questions?
Questions for Mr. Gordon?
I'm just looking at this real quick. I sent a couple of spelling or acronym updates to my files. Do you want to change? Just that you refer to ADA prior to ever using
And full language.
The Disabilities Act, and also since disability, those were the ones that I had.
We can add that. I believe it appears earlier in the, this isn't the full standard set of standards, but.
Okay.
Yeah, we can change it. Resolution allows for that.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Other questions?
No.
Mr. Peterson?
Motion to approve resolution number 19-019, amending city standards attached as exhibit two.
Second.
Second item is confirmed.
Yes.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify with saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Push your passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Gordon.
Thank you.
Mr. Mizatello, Pacific Power Electric Vehicle Charging Station Grants.
Thank you, Mayor. This resolution will just be in support of a grant, a grant application of Pacific Power for an electric vehicle fast charger station over here at City Hall. We are in the Pacific Power service area in the program which one can see by a hook on the hyperlink to Pacific Power program. It basically covers located unit acquisition of the unit and installation. Their technical assistance folks are helping us. We're one of the first cities where they are spending, they have technical assistance at. So basically the plan is once we get the technical assistance report from the attorney that's in during the July August iteration and then see where we go from there.
Questions for Ms. Peterson. Ms. Selby?
Do you have a recent update on what's going on with the one that we were talking about putting in the DX?
We're working on the DX. I need you to mail it to the app because our needs will do it as well.
Apparently they have an hour-long meeting about it, trying to decide if it would be better at the DX or the other parking lot. The university internally. And then their conclusion was, let's ask Melody. She's the only one we know with an electric car.
And what was the outcome?
I said, put it at the DX.
Only an hour, huh?
My boss who was in the meeting was like, I thought it should have been done in the first five minutes, but for some reason we spent an entire hour.
I will say to slightly correct Mr. Mizatello, we're not one of the first applicants to the assistance program for Pacific Power. I was told today we are the first. The CEO of Pacific Power addressed the port economic meeting beforehand. So thank you very much, Mr. Mizatello. Any further questions for Mr. Peterson?
So I was just kind of curious, further down on the agenda, we're talking about repaving the parking lot up here. So I was just curious about the timing on the installation of the charging station, if that might affect that timeline at all for repaving or not?
I talked to the technical assistance folks. We'll design, we'll do the repaving everything around the area that would best be suited for it. They're aware of it. I've turned in the initial plans to them, so they're working on it.
Okay. Is the asphalt plan going before or after?
Likely before because once we, I mean, once we turn in the grant application, it would be July into August, and we likely wouldn't get notification, we gather, into October, November. So, and we're only doing front half of that. So there's ways that we can work with this and make sure we aren't having to tear out on anything. And I've communicated that to them, so.
There's a kind of a curiosity question. Are those stations, is that a high amperage line that goes over to it? So it'd have to be routed down and that's, or is it a?
It would, this would be a fast charger, so it would be a high amp line. We do have that out in College Ave. And this grant application also covers like the installation and construction.
Yeah.
Should we get them ordered.
Yeah. Thanks, Mike.
Other questions? Mr. Bobbitt?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number 19-020, authorizing and supporting a Pacific Power grant for an electric vehicle charging station at City Hall.
I will second.
Seconded by Mr. Bobbitt, seconded by Mr. Cleveland. Thank you for the discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, please signify with saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Push your passes unanimously. Ms. Peterson, rural community design initiative city flag project.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. This has gone through several iterations. Basically, the Washington State University rural community design initiative, and they took the sign as a project. Students toured the community with Mike Dunne and others to see what we're about. And then there were multiple surveys to see what the top flag design was in from there, based on council direction, narrow it up to the top four and then see where it goes from there. And this was essentially the top design. The others did not have a score near that. And then you can see within the agenda bill and documentation essentially what all the visual elements made.
Questions for Mr. Peterson?
Will this explanation be somewhere, like on the web or something that people can go look at?
The idea would be to put it on the website.
Yeah, because I think it, I like the design, but it's cool to see the thinking behind it.
Mr. Bobbitt?
The only thought on this design is it doesn't really say College Place to my own concern. It's a nice design. I like the design concept, but it just, to me, does not speak College Place. It seems to me a flag that represents College Place should make that statement.
Mr. Peterson?
As a counterpoint, when I'm in College Place and I look out, most any direction, these are the kind of things I see. So this kind of, to me, is kind of reminiscent of just where we are and kind of about. And certainly we see similar views of all other things, but I like it.
Mr. Peterson?
Mike, the sampling size, I think that was brought up last week or before. So how many people in total responded, was it approximately?
With the last one is about 132 people. So technically, 1.38% of the population, which is 9,590.
I'm trying to remember my statistics class from college, not really clearly here, but, so, I mean, it's a random sample of classes. It's people that would respond who have access to it. I mean, yeah.
Want to perform some t tests?
I was going to do a standard deviation test on it or something, but, no, that's a, yeah, I guess it's a good sample size in your estimation.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And in other states where we've done like surveys that I worked, yeah, that came out about that.
Yeah, okay. Thanks, Mike.
And it's just a blue, right? Not like in the PDF that we have there, so white header and footer?
Yeah, that was just printed in the PDF, so.
Okay.
Other questions for Mr. Peterson?
I mean, it's not my favorite thing either, but I also hate this process because I'm not really creative. I do accounting. So, yeah, I like it. I like the symbolism behind it.
Is there a motion?
I move we adopt resolution number 19-021, which adopts the flag designed by Sarah Flauton and Rachel Pupina as the city flag.
Second. Moved by Ms. Selby, seconded by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify with saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
So, positive for Ms. Hernandez, Ms. Selby, Ms. Sherman, Mr. Peterson, Mr. Cleveland, no, or Mr. Bobbitt. Got that? Thank you very much. Push your passes. Thank you all very much. Mr. Mizatello, standard conduit systems.
This is just a boilerplate lease agreement for when folks want, basically, we can fiber through our conduit. Basically sets the terms that could be for 10 years, the fact that we could issue credits if they extend the conduit network per their own accord and at their own cost. Also, it's saying that they have to follow the franchise and right away codes, which is titled 2012. And then monthly rent that, that's a 0.24 cents per the per linear foot of the conduit per year. And this agreement was borrowed from city of Lincoln, Nebraska, and then city of Pullman is also basically taking this agreement and using it as well. So it seems to be a fairly standard agreement that folks are using, so.
And I'll just input with your permission, I reached out to some other city attorneys saying, hey, are you doing this? And the response back I got was, we want to, give us your form when you have it done. My permission, I'll share that. So it's definitely ahead of the game, but it's something that like Rand and then Auburn are.
Questions for Mr. Mizatello? Mr. Cleveland?
Some tangentially related. If you're per, I can chat with you a little bit later, but what is kind of the status of utilizing the fiber or the conduit line that's under College Avenue?
I'm engaged in negotiations with the poor zone they have. Because the thing is with the conduit underneath College Avenue, which you do not own, they have the poor zones they have. And, yeah, then I'm trying to get a partnership going with them where we could finally put stuff in it, so.
Sounds like a plan. Perhaps we should share the lease agreement with the board?
I already did share.
I will motion to adopt resolution number 19-022, which adopts a standard conduit system lease agreement for the College Place Communications Network.
Well, it's moved by Mr. Cleveland. I think Mr. Bobbitt was a hair ahead. Any further discussion? No pun intended. Seeing none, all in favor, please signify with saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Push your passes unanimously. Mr. Ricard, City Hall Fire Alarm System Upgrade.
So the existing fire system that we have here at the city was not designed to call out. So it's a, it does have smoke detection in it and I think heat, but if there is a fire in the middle of the night, it doesn't do anything. The alarm would go off, but it wouldn't call the fire department. And so we would probably burn to the ground. In addition to the design, during the remodel of the community development side, the announcator had to be relocated. And in the process of getting that back up and running, because of the outdated equipment, we were not able to get it to function. The alarm kept going off and we couldn't reset it. So it's not engaged right now, so.
No smoking?
No smoking, yeah. So the new fire alarm system would be designed to meet the National Fire Protection Association Fire Alarm and Signal Code, the NFPA 72. Our fire marshal, Mr. Booth, drafted up specs that we sent out to three different companies that do these sort of installations. Walla Wall Electric was non-responsive after repeated requests. And Doyle Electric requested that there be a design fee associated with it. And then Hayes Electric submitted a bid at $27,384.30. We did budget $20,000 for this project. Obviously, it's a little over, and we're asking for a 10% contingency in the event that there's some unforeseen increases in the installation. But we do have some projects. For instance, the remodel to the jail cells is looking like it's going to be a very extensive project, so we will not be doing that remodel this year. We're working on the designs that will have good numbers to work off of for budgeting. But we have additional funds that can be sourced. Any questions?
When will this get started and be completed?
As soon as we can get a contract signed, well, they'll work us into their schedule. So we're hoping in the next month they'll be able to start the project.
How long will that take?
You know, I don't know. Probably a week or so, I would imagine. Not, should it take long at all?
So it would be budgeted $20,000 for the project, and obviously it's coming up way over that. Was that $20,000 budgeted based on best guess, or did we use comparables of other projects of this size?
It was best guess. We reached out to a couple of companies and kind of got some ballpark ideas for replacements, systems. And the, one of the reasons why there is such a drastic increase is that the prevailing wage in the fall, after we went through our budgeting cycle for electricians, almost went up by $30 an hour. So that was a huge hit right there.
So you feel it's a fair?
Yeah.
Fair. Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Sherman?
I'd like to motion to authorize the city administrator to contract with Hayes Electric to upgrade the City Hall Fire Alarm System in the amount to exceed $32,734.
Second?
Moved by Ms. Sherman, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify with saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Push your passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr. Ricard.
Thank you.
Mr. Hartwig, paving City Hall front parking lot.
You've probably noticed the front parking lot isn't in the greatest of shape. So the area we're looking at is the area in blue. The area.
Just one switch on the side.
This area was paved, and it's holding up fairly well. It was paved when we purchased this building and so forth. So that one's not in bad shape. The, this was done, obviously, when we built City Hall in 1992. We were running out of funds, so parking lots aren't the most interesting thing that people want to spend money on. So it was not built with a very good base. This one will have a good base. This will have eight inches of crushed rock and three inches of asphalt. This will last. So contacted three companies. One said they were not able to give us a price at this time. Central Washington was the low bidder at $45,643.63, not including tax. And so what you see here, what you see in your proposal includes tax and a little contingency. So I'm open for any questions.
Ms. Selby?
It always seems to me that the spots right directly in front of City Hall are slanted the wrong way. Because it's almost, it's one way going out, so you can't really, they're slanted as if you're coming this way, but nobody can really drive that way.
Okay. The history on this is, there used to be an island right in here, and it was two-way.
Yeah.
Before. And the island consisted of the drop-off boxes for utilities and so forth. The idea right now is this would probably go back to two-way parking. I mean, drive-in parking, head-in parking.
So it would be revised?
Yeah.
Awesome.
Ms. Sherman?
A little while. When we were talking about this, I think last year or the year before, and we were putting, had the farmer's market out there, we talked about running electricity. Is there any need to do that while it's opened up?
Well, when we redid the sign here, we have, we brought out an extra conduit and ended it right here. So if we needed to bring it somewhere, but with the farmer's market not here anymore, it would be a lot, it'd be extra money to do that.
Right.
And I don't know that it's critical here. We've got power that runs down here, so that if we ever get that tree planted here, we've got power running that, especially now that we use LEDs. The only thing we'd have to look at is the vehicle charging station because I don't even think the power, the power out here might not be enough. So we're going to have to figure out that, if it's going to be out, out in this area.
Mr. Cleveland?
How is the general status of other areas of the parking lot? Are they, I mean, you mentioned kind of up near the police station near that building that we purchased a while ago, I guess. It's holding up pretty well. What about kind of other areas of the parking lot? Are there any others that are, would be, you know, in need of repaving, but we're kind of?
This is, this is the most critical. This is the most critical. This was, this was put in, like I said, paved when we bought that building and made that accessible, and then transferred the drop-off boxes back here. That, this part, this part back here is in good shape. I mean, it's got cracks in that, which we can take care of there, but it doesn't need to be repaved now.
Oh, okay. So there's no like, we're not like holding back or any reason?
No.
Other questions for Ms. Jordan? Mr. Bobbitt?
So you're saying that the charging station would be lined up towards the front there?
I do not know. I haven't been in any of those discussions to know where they would be doing it.
The charging station likely wouldn't be in the front in any of the cords or any of that that would go there. That brand would cover. That's how it's being built. And they're going to communicate that to us. I've been told within the next two weeks, so.
I would anticipate that this, this price, for this price, we're going to kind of live within their schedule when they can fit it in with other jobs that they're doing because there's quite a bit of paving going on right now.
Mike, so I understand. So we're not talking about cutting a seam through this to put the charger on the south side, are we?
I'll show you. I mean, pretty much where, where they were initially looking at maybe putting something out would be like at the corner here or something easily, easy like that. But we're going to get like a report that says all of that.
Yeah. I know you guys have a will in hand. I was just curious to be, yeah. You guys have indoctrinated us not to cut over through new roads.
Yeah.
I have an aversion to that, and so.
No, if, you know, if we were looking at it over here, I would extend that conduit before, before. The issue is not the wiring. The issue is get the conduit in because the wiring can follow at any time.
Yeah. Yeah, that company has a couple of large, yeah, in the valley, they've got a couple of big jobs here coming up here.
Ms. Sherman?
So how long of a process will that be for us? And how will staff get to their parking spot during that time?
Well, we're going to have to figure that out. And it will take, it will take a while because we're going to be hogging out, we're going to be hogging out about 11 inches of material here.
They're just going to make moves?
Yeah. No, we'll, we'll figure it out. We've got, we've got to figure out how public is going to get here too.
Yeah.
Oh, great.
I would anticipate they may have to put, take out half and, and get that back up with rock and then do the other half.
We do have two other avenues.
Yeah. But we, but employees are not the problem. Employees can park back in the fire station area or other places.
Other questions for Ms. Peterson?
I move to authorize the city administrator to execute the contract with Central Washington Asphalt to pave the front portion of the City Hall parking lot in an amount not to exceed
asphalt to pave the front portion of the city hall parking lot in an amount not to exceed $55,000.
Mr. Peterson seconded by Ms. Sherman. In further discussion, see none, all in favor, please signify the same aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Hartway. Mr. Rosatello, Public Services to College Place with municipal code.
Thank you, Mayor. This item will be on the agenda for next meeting. The lease goes to take a last and re-able from a legal perspective. Again, this takes into account retooling, the water, wastewater and storm codes reflect the current revised codes of Washington and general operational definitions and then actually have the whole water conservation code and not just the vague ability that in fact we can do stuff, so...
Questions for Ms. Peterson?
You know, I would just say those workshops have just been golden from my perspective. We come to these council meetings and it has sped up the process and I feel like we're all much more informed and, you know, repeated education sessions and whatnot. So I just wanted to thank everyone for that, the staff, mayor and Mike and others. It's just to understand the issues before we sit down here and define to the few things while we're here, just so that everyone understands that we're not looking at that as the first time. We've had an in-depth analysis of many of these areas weeks before we actually look at this for a final... So anyway, thanks again for the whole process.
Absolutely.
Any other questions for Ms. Pop? See none? Mr. Ricard, banner code.
Thank you. So we started thinking about a banner code in 2016 when we got our light poles up. And we kind of just drug our feet on it because if we implement a full-fledged banner code similar to what Walla Walla Downtown Foundation does, it would be a pretty intense program. And we don't have that infrastructure, the labor side of it, set up. There are so many community events in the valley that I could see a lot of use on our banners. So we've talked with the mayor and Mike about pulling back and still having a banner program that allowed local events that are primarily city-sponsored to utilize the poles, of course, because they are ours, the city's. And then also wanted to give the private and public schools an opportunity to display, you know, school pride or advertise special events related to the schools. So we revamped it. There is a restrictive use section that allows the city to designate specific banners for exclusive use of a particular school or university. So the university section, any light poles and banners that are front their property, we will have to enter into an exclusive use agreement with them that allows them the city permission to formally to install the banners on their light pole poles that front their property. And in the event we add these decorative light poles down in front of the high school and middle school, again, we could enter into an agreement with the public schools to utilize those specifically exclusively for the school district. You know, we've been talking about extending lights up Academy Way possibly someday in the future, so those schools there would be able to enter into an exclusive use agreement. So it's not just specific to the university, it's expandable based on the need. We do probably need to have Re take a look at whether or not excluding all other nonprofits, whether we'd face a challenge on that because I'm sure if they see other, you know, if the schools utilizing them, that there will be a desire for the program to be expanded. But it's an expensive program for the city to run. If we were to do it, we would have to charge what it cost us to do the installation unless another nonprofit group wanted to take on that role of installing them and managing the program. The Downtown Foundation charges $30 for nonprofit per banner and $40 for profit. My initial analysis that I did on what we would have to charge, the review of the banners and approval, what would fall to myself, and then there would be some administrative stuff, and I'm looking at probably a $69 application fee. That's what it covers. That's an hourly rate to cover myself and a staff member to assist in that. And then the installation itself, we have... It takes about 15 minutes per banner and two Public Works employees to do the installation of each one. And then the bucket truck, which that's a $60 an hour rate, that's what we would charge to utilize that piece of equipment, and then $45 an hour per Public Works employee. So, you know, you divide that, that 150 bucks by four and it works out to $37.50 a banner, which is close to what Walla Walla is charging. But we would have that application review fee in addition to that, so... Any questions?
Mr. Peterson, Ms. Sullivan?
Well, the city wall, this has been modeled after... Did I understand that right, Mr. Ricard?
Well, initially, yeah, we modeled it. There are some similarities, yeah.
Well, it's interesting because it's not necessarily... Trying to remember, a lot of those have a theme for the valley and for Walla Walla, don't they? Bike races.
Was your initial question answered?
Are we modeling this after the city of Walla Walla's process? Because it seems like a lot of those are themes that Walla Walla is behind, not necessarily that there's a school or... I mean, does Walla have a much thinner approach to this than what we're thinking here, would you say? Or... I understand there's the schools and not for profits, but there's something more themed based on the season or city events, aren't they? Or am I thinking incorrectly?
Well, they have a very broad approach, I would say. I mean, any nonprofit, as long as it's a public community event, you're not... You can't advertise your business and things of that nature. But I mean, there are other regional... I mean, while I could see the fairgrounds wanting to advertise when the fairs come into town, you know, and putting banners up.
Good point.
That is managed by the Downtown Foundation?
It is. It is, so...
Who's thinking of all that? Oh, are the schools interested in doing this? Is that why we're...
Well, there was some discussion a couple of years ago. I think Melody might have brought it up that maybe, you know, if we don't have a full-fledged program, that we should open it up to our schools, especially since we're allowing the university to use them and so...
I was thinking of, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the Walla Walla community does... They can hang down and that would be decent, but...
Good point.
That's what I think.
So they're changing them so often. They have quite a variation of it and so...
And then they have the big, you know, NRA meeting signs that are across, things like that. A lot of...
So, yeah, there's a lot more to just reviewing the initial banner and hanging it.
Yeah.
There's monitoring when they need to come down, how soon they can go up. And, you know, you're taking money for these things, so these groups are expecting their banners to go up when you say they are. And that's an administrative nightmare for my office and for Paul's crews. I mean, they're spread thin, so...
Sounds like we need a downtown...
Yeah, and I guess I like the idea of charging for it rather than use of the downtown. Like if a nonprofit wanted to do it, I wouldn't want that if they were taking down our signs. I would just feel weird if they damaged one of our signs. Some other group or entity was doing this.
Yeah, you would have to have an organization, whether, you know, if we had a business association that wanted to manage it or something, or our own foundation.
With all the extra stuff. So, I mean, one question that I had, and I had mentioned this to Mike, was under the banner design on page three, it says all event banners must feature a community event occurring within the city or the Walla Walla valley. And I guess I don't like that. I wouldn't necess... I mean, I guess we could advertise for the fair, for instance, but that seems weird because it's not in college.
Yeah, no, that... What page... That was on page two. That should probably be taken out.
Okay.
Because the intent is... This code is... The intent is just to limit it to events taking place in college.
Okay, good.
So that was on page three?
Yeah.
That kind of answers my question too.
12.32.070 banner design.
A.
Oh, okay.
Number eight.
Are you sure?
Yeah, and in E above that, I've got a duplicate, the removal of, the removal of. There's some, you know, it's a draft.
Yeah.
Just one quick thought. As far as cry from when we first started that, we were trying to figure out who was going to actually have enough money to put any banners up. Remember that discussion? It's like, so as far as perspective, it's one of these things now we... It obviously has worked. And if there's interest in there, so from going around asking for donations to fund the flags or whatever.
Yeah. No, I could see the public schools or the public schools taking advantage of some random, you know, hawk flags up for 12 weeks, you know, in a year or something like that. Not be worth it.
Can you... Since I was on previous conversations, why would we... Or what's the benefits or maybe even the disadvantages to doing restricted use sections? Why would we offer those?
Well, it allows particular nonprofit, you know, schools, public entities to take ownership of those and only allow things that are related to their function.
Does this... But how does this benefit? Does it... Are we making assumptions that they're going to constantly be putting banners up or wanting to have banners put up which then help with the cost?
Yeah.
Or is it...
Well, so...
Concerned that they're going to be unhappy if somebody else puts a banner up in front of their...
That was... I mean, the university has had that... They have that desire. You see periodically throughout the year, they change them out. And we allowed them to do that on those poles. We need to enter into an agreement with them. They need to provide us with liability insurance and be... Hold them responsible for any damage to the poles in that installation process. But, yeah, they want to have full control over those poles in front of their properties.
Would that put us at a disadvantage by not allowing others who may want to... Just for example, if they want to put something up, they're willing to pay for it. Could we lose revenue for that because the university's not using them? But they have full control, restricted use of them.
All right. I don't think this is a revenue making for us.
Yeah, I don't make too many money just in the cost.
Correct. Right. Yeah, yeah, okay. That's all. Thank you.
I think we could write into our... Into the exclusive use agreement. If we have a Labor Day, if we want, we could write it in where during the Labor Day celebration, we're going to take... All your banners need to be removed and you need to put up flags. We could have that kind of control. They are our... You know, it is the city's property. So we can, you know, do that.
And are there any stipulations of what they're allowed to use the banners for? I mean, I understand advertising events, but are they allowed to do messaging? Is somebody allowed to get a banner? Anybody, not just the university, anybody allowed to put a banner and promote some kind of message?
It has to be a community event.
Community event.
And through the... In the exclusive use agreement, the university can promote their school. I mean, you see their messages are up on them and...
Yeah, but, okay. No, that makes it clear. Thank you.
Other questions for Ms. Pop? Thank you very much. Mr. Rosatello?
Thank you, Mayor. ICSC, International Council of Shopping Centers. The real estate conference was last week in Las Vegas. It was very successful. People actually do know who we are now, which is a good thing. And I ran out of flash drive, so...
Wow! How easy to take.
I had a box of 50 plus a half box of 25 miles. So, yeah, we got a lot of good contacts there. And I'm afraid speaking ambiguities because some of them were in competition with Walla Walla. And other ones, there are like disclosures of... Probably the big one, which is the big box grocery general merchandiser. They continue to have interest in their property across from the high school. Their big... They're always wanting to get done because we're in competition with Walla Walla. And they have for the... The Myra Road, but for Myra Road, that all has to be built through the road and water and wastewater and storms. So we are in better position for that. But they said...
Kind of quick question here. As I understand it, both ShopCo is closed now and King Mart is closed, if I understand it. Do this affect like, I mean, it was basically a real estate option kind of opening up. Does this, I guess, change the board at all?
Not really because ShopCo isn't big enough for a lot of what was looking this way. And then the King Mart area, just if you look at just the economics of everything, you aren't going to get anything like that over there because when I was over at ICSC talking about that, you may get like mountainous businesses over there and smaller businesses, but your bigger retailing, restaurant establishments, they just are not... They don't want to go over that way. They see the growth trajectory on the west side of our valley here, so they want to be over here. So that King Mart, it's going to have to be local type stuff that goes over to our house.
Well, the discussion was carried out in multifamily housing.
Yeah. Yeah, so anyway, with that trunk line, they just asked for updates because we are doing the engineering and that. And then we're working with parties to locate where the lift stations go and so I'm proof of that because of previous interactions with a counter park across the other side of Myra Road. So just making sure that we do what we say we're going to do on that. But they are interested, multiple hotels as well. The thing that's really helping with that is the fact that half the use being built behind Le Schwan because the big issue we've had the last couple of years, the... That's the tap house restaurant, Justin Watson's building behind Le Schwan down off of State Route 125. Because the big issue was that hotels are interested in our area, but then they wind at the restaurant and then the restaurant winds at the hotel and neither one was ready to work. So it was like a weird game of ping pong and now that there is something going in that has raised it with the hotels now. So they're very interested. There is a gas station, car wash concept that's going in, that will be going in along Myra, one and two locations right now, so I'm helping them with that. There is also a regional shopping center developer who is looking at our area to specifically in College Place, they want to be over here. They're out in California and they were a developer behind Aspen Domo and they want to do a power center type concept. So, yeah, good conversation with them. And then there's a regional developer of food halls and that's basically where you sublease like space for different food concepts and people dining like a shared dining area. Harvey and I went to one when we were... When we went to the flag design competition in Pullman.
Yeah, I... In Pullman, they took an old hardware store that was built in a Quonset hut. They gutted it out, finished out very nicely. You went to kiosk to order your food from the various stalls around there and then they delivered to a big central dining area. It was no cash exchange exchanged and all that, it was all done by credit card. And even in Pullman, I think there were five different food places. And even in Pullman, I think there were five different food, food places in this, I'd never seen the concept before. Really, really an interesting concept, because basically you've got restaurant kind of food that, that was there with a common eating area, and they had a bar, and a separate bar. So it's really, really quite fascinating. So if you're ever in Pullman, it's there, it's you come down the hill into Pullman, off to the left, and it looks like an old Quonset hut.
And the developer, they're pretty, he's someone interested in even in here. So he's looking for a second one, and it's called the Lumber Yard.
Mr. Selby?
There's a similar idea at one of the malls in, outside of Seattle, one of those towns. And it's, it's really cool, because it's a little bit different, because you order and get your food, but they will not allow chain restaurants in there.
Yeah.
So it's all of the, it's like food truck night, only it's air-conditioned.
That's what, also, I, I would describe it as that, it's...
Yeah, well, it sounds like a fairy building in New York, where everything's just kind of, except they order in one place, but everything's around, and you can just... We need that. Okay, awesome.
That would be, I would love that.
Mr. Peterson?
So Mike, when we're looking at, you know, I was thinking about this the other day, when we're, when you are looking at Big Box Retailer's, I mean, a, a food service or a grocery store outlet, let's call it, or whatever you'd call it, food's not taxed, correct? So...
Restaurant food.
But, but not like a Safeway or, or, so, most of it is not taxed?
Yeah, but the one we're talking about, so does general merchandise and stuff like that too, which adds to it, so...
Yeah, and I know if some, you know, you can't, the whole look, a gift horse in the mouth type of thing, you have to, you know, but, on the other hand, there are considerations there, aren't there? In other words, if it's something that you get the property tax, you might get some support for development.
Yeah.
But long-term, if it's, how it's weighted as far as sales tax coming in with what they're selling, correct?
Yeah, well, this one, I mean, mid to long-term, if we get it, that would be like a giant magnet on the side, on the side of the valley where other stuff would go with.
Intended consequences, another, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Definitely, so...
I see, okay.
Yeah.
This might be a memory, it probably is, but as we're having these conversations or as things start to get, optimistically start moving forward...
Yeah.
Do you have conversations with, like, try and data over their staffing levels in order to be prepared for a hotel and, like, large, I mean, basically, I just, I lived in San Francisco, in Sacramento during two thousand eight, two thousand seven, and like, as everything was super expanding, and they did, they were not set for those types of things, they just kind of were building all these houses, and it was kind of a bust, or I don't think that's it.
Yeah, well, well, that, that's something we keep having conversations on, is I...
But it is a chicken and egg situation, because you've got to have the income to hire...
Exactly, yeah.
Well, and the interesting thing, when I was at the convention, is that there is a grocer and general merchandiser who was once not considering going into this area, because they said we were over saturated, and now that Kmart and ShopCo closed, we aren't anymore, and now they are looking to have a presence, and they're nowhere near around here, so if we were able to get one or both of them, we'd be, so then, awesome.
Yeah.
That's interesting.
Didn't we set up a thing where we could, we have somebody that's like on call to do plan review and stuff for us?
Yeah, safety, yeah.
Yeah, so that, I mean, I see that as a way to kind of bridge that little gap where, you know, we haven't quite got the revenue yet, but we're starting to have to approve plans.
Yep. Ms. Colvin?
Yes, I would just like to say that, I think Mike and Troy and I have been talking a lot about the impact that ShopCo and Kmart closing is going to have on Walmart, and the increased revenue to Walmart, but the increase that is, with Troy, when we look back at the case numbers that have been filed, we're way off the charts for what it used to be. And so, I've been kind of warning Mike that, that that is something as far as the criminal side goes, that we need to be prepared for.
I never would have thought of that. That's it, yeah, thank you.
Instead, because ShopCo and Kmart have closed, it is seeming that a lot of businesses are more so looking over at this site to locate, since the town center's over here, so this is something to expect.
Mr. Selby?
I, I'm just curious, Ree, if recently Walmart got rid of the people that stand there and, you know, talk to you as you leave, did that have, did that seem to correlate with the thefts going up, or is it just...
I think it is, it's two, well, maybe threefold. The increase in officers, just Troy's administration of the officers, I think there's more criminal citations being written. Walmart has stepped up their game on apprehension, detection of apprehension, and even though they don't have the readers, they're now utilizing receipt checkers for part of the time. And we, Troy and I had a, had a meeting with Walmart, because we were kind of looking at our caseload and saying, are we spending this, these money wisely on these thefts and crimes that, that occur in Walmart? And the, the easy answer is yes, and they're going to increase, at least in the near future. Because Walmart, we were pretty confident that Walmart uses their discretion in the best interest of the community. You know, I, when I see someone and they're stealing diapers, I think, oh, that's horrible, they need diapers. Well, Walmart thinks that too, and so if I get a case, it's because they've already screened out the ones that they think aren't in the best interest really of prosecuting. It's the ones that are, that are stealing, buying everything else and stealing the diapers, you know, buying the things they don't necessarily need like necessities and stealing the diapers. And so, they're really, 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 really sophisticated at what they do and how they do it. I think it put eight hundred thousand in loss last year, and so, yeah.
Just wanted to start.
Free, that's a huge...
Yeah, and they are just, they know the computer system and the glitches to get past everything, so it's, you know, people we're prosecuting, I, I can, I think I can guarantee are not the ones that just need a break in or down, they really, they, they really do a good job of Walmart, I think.
Anything else, Mr. Rosado?
No, they have, oh...
Very good.
I have a quick question. Did you say that there was more eating establishments that were...
Yeah.
Interested?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, that really seems to be where the growth is at right now, retail and commercial wise. It's pretty much lodging establishments and restaurants and experientially retail or retail where there's experience to it. Big boxes, a lot of them, they're shrinking in general, because the two that are on our radar are pretty much, I would say right now at least, the two remaining ones that are on their own in that, but they're in discussions with Amazon to be acquired, so, because Amazon's trying to buy a lot of stuff that's causing issues, so...
Sure, okay, thank you.
Yeah. There'd be no...
Just a general question, is there an update on the acquisition of the police vehicles? So do you have any, where are we at on that?
Yeah, I've got a picture from the company, all the equipment is in stock, they're waiting for it to show up, and once it shows up, there'll be about two week transition period. They can fill a lot up to a hundred and twenty days, so only sixty days in...
Okay.
Not doing quite so...
Can I represent our...
Very well, very, actually, great job. Yeah, I'm doing this.
What?
He's on the guy, and I'm like, mhm.
Eight hundred thousand is the right number, sure.
It was eight hundred thousand last year, it was a million, so, in our, we're having a percent...
So much is that busy, eh?
How is, I'm sorry, do we make money for that?
I'm working on it.
So, like, when we're prosecuting, like, I'm, I'm asking, like, is there revenue from prosecuting, that's in order to maybe get another police officer?
So, when there are criminal fines assessed, which is a, is a penalty under the code...
Right.
That goes to the state and then is redistributed out to us. Anytime that we can recapture something that comes straight to us, that's my goal. So the DUI enforcement, emergency enforcement class we're recruiting, I have, I just had a discussion with the defense attorneys, and the judge usually assesses, if he assesses a fine, three hundred dollars. Usually it's not anything. But what I'm going to work on is that when we think that there's going to be a fine, to request half of that as recruitment to the city for public defenders. And it, it gets a little bit complicated, but the Supreme Court doesn't want to put any sort of cost of criminal justice system onto the agenda. But a judge can assess a criminal fine as punishment, and the Supreme Court can't do anything with that. So if we can reach an agreement and the defendant agrees to pay that, then we know it's not going to be challenged later on. So I'm, I'm working on that. And really, any, anytime you can get money, come right back to us, we try to do it.
Yeah, an example of that is the DUI coaching program, we're starting to see that money coming, for the traffic enforcement, so we can reuse that money for traffic reinforcement or equipment for traffic enforcement.
Right, nice. And then the infractions, a bigger percentage of infractions, like, you come back to the city, I don't quite remember the details of that, I could find out, though, please.
I just had a comment on one of the informational items. The letter to the mayor, that gives me hope. I mean, not all of my college students could write a letter that articulate, so, if, if she's okay with it, I think we should like put it on our website, and, and tell the teachers, good job.
Well, it's, I, I thought it was absolutely charming, which is why...
It was adorable.
Which is why you got it. And we certainly can use that as part of our education for the things that we can do for the, the, informing the, the public about the opportunity to vote for inclusion in our, our, this, but I was, I, I like you, that, if a fifth grader wrote that, they, they got a real future.
Yep. I, I showed it to one of my friends, and she's like, this gives me hope for the future.
I, I appreciated, I'm assuming Jessie's a female, but her phenomenally awesome. Making sure we, we got the, you got the message, so...
It's not just regularly awesome.
Besides that, the, the printing is absolutely perfect, I wish I could print that.
So, she's going to look forward to getting back from you to do refund?
Yes.
Not yet, all right. Is there any further business?
All motion to adjourn.
We move the seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We adjourn.
Bye, wait, my response back is going to be, Vi, thank you very much, but you need to be telling this to your parents.